May ninth, twenty twenty-three, three P M. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Item two invocation will be given by Councilmember Vasquez and then we'll proceed with item three. If everyone wishing to join us, please stand and for a moment of prayer.
Please tell me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, it is with great gratitude that we accept all the blessings that you have freely poured on to us. We're thankful that you have called on to us to serve others. Father, help us to seek you in all things, great and small. Sometimes we get too wrapped up in the stresses of the day and the needs of the moment and we forget to call out to you. Help us, Lord, to use our time, our talents and treasures in ways that honor you and serves the citizens of our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Be seated. We're going to item three, discuss the leasing of the old fire station number six. Fire station located at thirty-four fourteen Brentwood, Peace Academy, West Texas. Go ahead, sir. Excuse me one second, I'm gonna take this phone calls on my dad real quick.
Okay, can you hear me? There, thank you. Okay, my name is Odo Cryce. Last twenty-two years, I'm doing business, I'm the businessman in West Texas. So basically today I'm here behalf of the Peace Academy of West Texas. Peace Academy of West Texas is basically, it's a very active community in Odessa area. And on the second page, let me say like the, I gave you the one hard copy for each so you guys can, you know, the, if you guys miss anything over here, you guys can see that one too. Basically, thank you for accepting us here, giving our presentation to you. That's one of the, basically, we, I never become in front of the last twenty-two years in the, you know, in front of the officials like this. It's the first time I'm giving presentation. If I get excited, make sure that you know the, because I'm nervous on that one. But at Peace Academy, basically, our formation is based on the, you know, the educational, cultural society, cultural society charitable and also scientific base, that's our formation. So we do the lots of activities through the our educational events. So we try to bring the, you know, the harmony and peace, you know, the together. And so we'll bring the communities together throughout the, you know, the cultural events and then educational. We try to, you know, the, have the, you know, the West Texas communities include us. Basically, we are one of the community members to in West Texas. So do you guys see my screen? Because I don't see the changing down there, so.
Yes, we see it.
Okay, so, but right now you guys see, right?
Yes.
Okay, Peace Academy, like the, on the third page, basically, what we did, it's not about, but it's the, what we did in West Texas in two thousand twenty-two. So we have seven, seventy-six active volunteers. None of the volunteers is getting paid, you know, so all of them as volunteer. And so not include the youth club, it's very active, you know, the volunteers, they do lots of activities. So twelve youth members, more than two hundred and forty activities, programs we did in last year. And this one is, you know, you guys can say that we didn't, you know, the, we calculate everything as much as we can, but it might go up and down minus two, plus two. And more than two hundred and, two thousand three hundred and forty-five people attended our, you know, the events, activities. And if today, you know, the, if I paid these volunteers or if city pays these volunteers or the community pays, it's gonna basically more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to make a payment to the volunteers, but since they are volunteers, so we calculate that one as, you know, the, we are helping the, you know, the Odessa community, more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, the, helping as volunteer base. And of course, we are, we, in our Peace Academy of West Texas, we have under branches, you know, the kind of dialogue, reaching out to different cultures, tutoring, like the, basically, one of the education part. And then the other one is, let me see that one. So as I told, you know, the, when I get, you know, the nervous, I'm gonna ask you all, you know, the couple of minutes, okay, on that one. So also we do the, you know, the outreach to the, you know, the other communities. So we have the different, four different departments under the Peace Academy of West Texas. So it's pretty unique, pretty organized, since it's a volunteer base, they don't get paid, but it's really organized. Most of our volunteers are the teachers, because someone works in Harmony Science Academy, someone works in different schools. And at the same time, there are lots of businessmen in West Texas, they are volunteering to us, of course. We are asking, you know, those of the art, you know, the Odessa, you know, the people, you know, the communities, they join us. Most of our activities, so they are volunteering to us too. But seventy-sixes are active volunteers, so constantly they are joining our events. So our activities, let me change from here to to communities. What's our vision? Our vision is the cultivate friendship, promote understanding, establish bridges, encourage dialogue and contribute to the global peace. So I think last twenty years, we are doing a good job. We have a small community center in, right across the fire station six. Dennis, Mr. Javier, they attended to, you know, the, we invite them to our, you know, that's a more cultural center. And it's a small, it's not enough, so that's why we were looking the, you know, the bigger space so we can increase that two hundred and forty programs into the, you know, the, why we cannot increase that one to the five hundred thousand different programs and reach more people. So that was, we were looking the more spaces. I'm thank to Mr. Javier and then Miss Dennis, they showed the fire station six. And that one was the, you know, the one of the, you know, the outcome from Yale. And also we said, let's think about it. And then we had the pre meetings and also that pre meetings, I think, you know, that we gave our nonprofit documents. We are five one O C, the nonprofit company. So what we do, like the, whatever the, you see on the page five, you know, it says the educational activities. So we did ninety-nine percent like last year. So we are not just telling you we're gonna do it, we are doing this one. And so right now we are adding couple more items. On that educational activities, we do the academic tutoring, because there are lots of, you know, the high school students. We try to make sure that, you know, that they are getting the, you know, the good grades, they are getting community service. Plus, they are, at the same time, you know, we are preparing for the universities or colleges. And then in this one here, we try to make sure that, you know, the our students, our attendees, you know, they are not just coming to eat or to drink, they are, you know, the, we wanna make sure that they are adding in their, you know, the knowledge. Not only the, you know, in the Odessa community, also they are meeting with the different cultures, different groups. And it's helping to our young generation, it's, you know, opening their mind. So they don't only work with the, you know, the, their friends, they are working with the different cultures and different friendship group. On the second one is charitable activities. I know Odessa is one of the best place to, you know, the, they do the lots of charitable activities. But what we do, we try to collaborate with the local, you know, the charitable companies, like, you know, the food banks, wheels on meals. We try to make sure that, you know, the, you know, we are helping them and then we are trying to collaborate with them. And I'm gonna mix this one into that, you know, the conversation. I walked through the most of, more than hundred and ten different nonprofit companies in Odessa. And most of them has the money location, but they don't have the volunteers. And so best part, in Peace Academy of West Texas, we have more volunteers, enough, get by money. But the location was our, you know, the deficiencies on that one. So hopefully, you know, the, this, after this presentation, your willings, you know, we'll have that location too. But biggest problem is in West Texas is the having the, you know, the volunteers to, you know, the, do the all these activities. So we have that one. And third one is the scientific, I know, third one is the social component activities. In this one, we try to bring the, this year, three different activities. One of them is the drug prevention program, that's called the youth drug prevention program. Try to make, make sure that, you know, that we are bringing the, the local law enforcement so they can, you know, the, inform us how to do it, they can give us, you know, the some, you know, the education. And then our youth club and then also our members, as most of them is teacher, we're gonna create a program so that way they can reach out to other schools. They can make a couple, you know, the, kind of like the seminars to educate the students. At the same time, we try to bring them into the activities in our community center. Instead of they are, you know, the, staying on the TVs or staying in the street, we try to bring the volunteer, the, do the activities in our community center. So it's called the drug, youth drug prevention program. And then second is, I seen this one, I attend to one of the meeting, you guys had the, you know, child and the women abduction prevention program. And that one was the heartfelt, it was in, I think, Motel Dome or Elantra Dome. So it was one of the like, so we, we, our three members were there too. So at that day we decided, why we don't go on this one more? Because I seen, you know, the, not yell, but the behind the scene, when you guys were talking, people were crying. There are big scars on people's, you know, the heart for that. And how we can do this one? Number one is, again, open our community center for everyone. So they can come, they can join, they can listen voluntarily, seminars and they can do the voluntary activities. So they can help the communities, they can see their, you know, the problems or the scars, how they can, you know, to reach out to others. So that's one of the heartfelt program I ever attended. And also we put that one in our program. So hopefully, you know, this year we have four, you know, the seminar programs for that. And the third one is financial literacy workshop. This one is our, you know, the ninety-nine percent are youth's problem. Not only the, you know, the regular, but my kids' problem too. When they have the money, they don't know how to spend, they spend right away. So how we can reach out to other kids, how we can give the literacy, you know, the, how they can, you know, to keep their financial clear. So we have the, what's it, accountant. So basically, he strictly is gonna attend for these programs and then he gonna create a seminar for in schools or invite the outside to the, our community center and then we're gonna give these workshops to everyone. And the third one is, I forgot to put over here, is the certificate program. Certificate program is one of the unique program. Basically, I do the permine ink. I don't wanna make the, you know, the advertising over here, but, so basically we print. So ninety-nine percent is our student goes to either college or the university. That one percent still in our work area over here. So they know, they, most of them has the skills. Our certificate program is gonna help them, you know, basically, we're gonna invite them, we're gonna open a three weeks course. We're gonna teach them how to do the, you know, to use the program, how to use the machines. If they wanna open their own business, definitely. Or if they wanna go and work for someone else, they're gonna have the skill to, you know, the, they're gonna have certificate to go and work there. So I seen this program, like the, in Odessa College, they are doing the welding. But ours is most of them, you know, the, we cannot use the machine operations. So we're gonna do the, you know, the, most of them, the permine ink side, kind of like the digital education and how to print, how to, you know, the, at the community. And scientific activities, we didn't do none of these over here, but it's in our program. Basically, we don't have the space to do it, that's why I brought this one to your attention. When we were together on the pre meeting, I mean, basically, why our kids come to, you know, the, any community center and then they can, you know, the willingly, you know, to join the activities, like the robot clubs? They can raise, you know, there are, every year we have three or four robotic competition around Texas. They can attend that one willingly without they are spending any money. So biggest problem is, again, you know, the parents, when they, you know, the, they send their kids to the any places, they have to pay, you know, the A, B, C, D. But what we are willing to do it is, don't spend money, come, learn, enjoy and then attend the competitions. That's our, you know, the promise to y'all on that one. And then research partnership, we do the, you know, the, that's again, most of our volunteers are teacher and so we are asking them, so they'll come, they'll, you know, the, basically, if they wanna go on to the, you know, certain direction at universities, so we can open the their way to, you know, the, if we can work together to, for the researchers or other stuff. So on the scientific activities so far, we didn't do any, but it's in our plan, again, biggest deficiency is, we don't have enough space. And most of the pictures, if you guys see, all of them is done by two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two. And again, I'm not just telling, I'm gonna do it, I'm telling you, we are doing this one. So today, if you grant the location, I'll be the happiest person ever. But, okay, if you don't grant, I'm gonna say thank you. Again, I'm gonna try to make sure that, you know, whatever I'm telling you, I'm gonna bring in front of this community. Reason is, last twenty-two years, I'm doing business, I'm eating from this community. My kids, I have six kids, by the way. So they are grown and then not only I'm helping the others, I'm helping my kids. So I have to, you know, to give this community back. That's one of the thing, I'm just a volunteer, I'm, I don't have income from this Peace Academy of West Texas. So that's the main purpose on that. And of course, there are lots of, this year we tried the street dinners. Basically, we gave the five street dinners. It's unusual in Odessa, you guys do the, what they do, you know, the.
Neighborhood one?
Kind of neighborhood gathering, but you know, at that gathering, you know, the usual, there's the parties, you know, all those stuff, you call the police. So they watch, but in our street dinners, there was hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty people attended. And then most of the people doesn't know their neighbors. And then they say, hey.
Kind of like a block party.
Ah, block parties, yeah, block parties. So basically, they don't know their neighbors. And they said, do you sit in this neighbor? Or so they sit, they ate together and also it was one of the unique one. So this year we tried that. And of course, we do the lots of community gathering, not only from our community, we do, we try to reach out to as much as we can to others. This year, most of y'all attend to our, you know, the, one of the annual friendship dinner. I don't know if you guys liked, Dennis, we didn't see you down there.
I baseball.
So, so basically, there was hundred and eighty-four people from different religion, different background, different culture. There was six different religion, at least seventeen different culture were there. So bringing all those together and, you know, the, on the same table, they are talking together, they are understanding each other and they are, you know, the collapsing each other, you know. So it's one of the unique gathering we are doing every year. That, that's actually, it's not like the second, we did this one almost since two thousand five, right? Semi is my business partner, by the way, so last twenty-two years is my business partner. And this one is strictly for the ladies cooking club, because they enjoy, they eat together, they enjoy together. So again, from the different background, different, you know, the, we open to everybody. They do the R S V P and then so they get together and then they cook together. I think we did the last year, four of, four gatherings, quarterly. And then there was a really good turnaround. Ladies coffee night, I don't know, you guys drank the Turkish coffee, I picture Mr. Mayor and Dennis, right? So it was, so we, we, so we, we, I tell everybody, the coffee is the regular coffee. But the best part is the, I, I use that phrase, I said the one cup coffee has forty years memory. So we sit and we talk about that coffee after forty years again. Hopefully, we'll invite y'all to our, you know, the cultural center again one more time. And then breakfast invitation, Mr. Mayor is there. So last year, there was a good turnaround.
You see that elbow action right there?
Yeah, so six hundred people attended to our breakfast. So it's.
Real, real quick, they gave me a gift at the, at the, at the dinner and I think it's huge. I was joking around about putting it in the new remodeled kitchen. Drink, that'd be a little presumption, I said, I don't know. I put it right behind, yeah, I put it away in the man cave. Hey, that's an elbow right there.
So it was, it says the teamwork, but he was drinking by himself, right? Also, we made a joke, that's why, this one is, we did the, since we didn't have enough space, we reached out, you know, the different communities and then we asked them if they can, if we can get together in their areas. And it's a couple, you know, the churches and different, you know, the community centers, you know, meeting room. And our youth club, so over here, the, basically, adults are doing a good job, but whatever we are trying to do, we are trying to, you know, to teach our generation, our youth generation so they can, you know, the, do the sacrifices or they can do the, you know, the volunteering, you know, the willingly. So what they do, like the, we do the, all the, you know, the educations, all those part, but I'll show you like that. This one is one of the unique one, they are still doing. So they collect the money, this youth group, basically, one of the teenager volunteered and then followed, the others followed. They sent the fifteen hundred dollars to the Africa and then how many people? Thirty-one or thirty-two people got the cataract surgery. So our fifteen hundred dollar made the thirty-two people's, you know, seeing clear. And the youth club did that one. And then, of course, if you see the water well, Odessa Youth Club. So if you go to the chat, you know, the, in Africa, make sure to visit our, you know, the water well, because it's from Odessa. So opening, they collected four thousand dollars with the fundraising and they send money through the embrace relief. We are collaborating the, some national big fundraising companies. So we send the money to them and then they open, they put the, you know, the name, Odessa Youth Club Waterwell. So it's happening, probably, you know, all there are hundreds, thousands people, that water well with the clean water. And of course, not only that, around the world, there are lots of, you know, the disasters, not only United States. So our youth club, also our members are helping to the, reaching out, you know, the, those collaborating with the, some national fundraising companies and then we are sending, you know, some donations, they are adding that one. And then they send us these pictures, our little money touched somebody's heart down there. So it's one of that one again. And of course, we are not only the youth club, we have a kids' club too. So youth is gonna get enjoyed, adults are gonna drink coffee, but also our, you know, the youth, you know, the kids are enjoying with our activities. We have weekly activities, thirty-six weeks activities for the kids and for the two weeks activities with the youth club. So we are making sure, you know, our volunteers are in our program, they are doing their activities. And of course, that's me under, we are serving the, every year, last eight years, we are doing the international festival at U T P B. There are almost, you know, the forty different cultures, they are hanging their flag down there. And so last eight years, we are attending, before that they said that I was there during that last thirteen years, but we are attending the last eight years. And we are opening, you know, the table and we are serving the food, we are, you know, getting together with the different cultures. And of course, teacher, we have some teachers, appreciation weeks, police appreciation weeks, and then others. We try to make sure that, you know, that we are honoring the our local frontiers. That's my presentation. I know like the, it took long, but if you guys have any questions, gladly, I'll explain.
Let me get the lights. Council, any questions? So, or real, real quick, can you talk about the business side, the, you guys are own Permine Ink, but what's, what's the other stuff that you guys?
Okay, Semi and I, again, last twenty-two, two, last twenty-two years, we are business partners and we study together. So we have Nakadware, it's a clothing brands, it born in Odessa and right now is throughout the Texas, in largest cities in Texas. So basically, we sell the top fifty brands in United, whatever the United States has top fifty brands. We have that one from Aria to Adidas to, you know, the Under Armour, all the local brands. We try to, you know, to make sure that we are putting the really good, you know, the brands together. And so right now, it's throughout the Texas. We own sunglasses company, like we sell the, kind of like sunglasses out. We have the similar brands, we carry the same stuff, again, it's a throughout the Texas. It's born in, over here in Odessa. And Permine Ink is here and in San Antonio, we have four locations. Basically, we do the large printing, small printing, we do everything in-house, we don't outsource. And of course, last six, seven years, we have a construction company. So basically, we have a good crew, we are like the general managers. Basically, we, we established our business last twenty-two years. And so Semi and I, we are, you know, the, as soon as they take over, so we said, what we gonna do? So we open a, you know, the construction company and right now we are running the construction company. We try to make sure, you, we are buying the, you know, the, most of the commercial buildings. Also, we did a couple flips in town.
You also were located on East University, you now have moved to Seventh Street behind the Albert.
Yeah, we changed the three locations that previous, existing right now, the Peace Academy of West Texas, you know, the cultural center was belongs to the Permine Inc. and the Osem Enterprises. Osem means Oorch and Semi, okay? So we moved, we bought the, behind the, you know, the Ace Hardware, there's an L-shaped building, we bought that location. And we stayed there and then since we are doing the construction business and we have a good credit, I guess, right, Semi? So we, so we bought the Affleck Building in Seventh Street and we did the makeup. And then everybody was saying, why you are buying the location from here, it's at that location? Then we did the makeup and then right now it's a good foot traffic standard and then it turned out really good. And then so we have, we filled the all the, you know, the, we have the renters. So bottom floor is gonna be total manufacturing area for Permine Ink. So we, we have the machineries, but we are getting the new machineries too. So we're gonna let the bigger print shop for the, you know, the Odessa area.
So what they, when they're doing is they expand it from where they were at over there by Casablanca and stuff like that on University and they move to a bigger place. So they were pretty, we pretty much had the whole space, they were pretty cramped in there.
That's right.
It would, they made that move to, to that multi, it's a three-story building.
Two stories.
Two stories. But here's the other part is you also have a Turkish restaurant in San Antonio, right?
Yes, we are testing out, just like the Chipotle.
Yeah.
But it's a Mediterranean version, like the basic you go down there, it's, so it's open for everybody, you know, the, if the Jewish goes there, it's a kosher, if Muslim goes, it's a halal. And also if anybody goes, so they can eat easily, freely, they won't ask the question. So we are testing right now down there, it's our first year and our numbers are climbing. So hopefully, you know, the, if we can turn that one into the franchise and then bring one home to Odessa.
So the vision for station six is to make it into a community center?
That's right.
And then you also were bringing in investment to upgrade the whole facility, both inside, outside?
Yes, basically, as soon as it came to our attention, as soon as we decided, let's go forward on that one, we asked Ms. Norma and Ms., you know, about the key and we walked through with our community members. Inside is designed for the, you know, the fire station, it's basically, it's not for the community center. So definitely, inside needs to upgrade or either two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, you know, that's, that, that much amount, you know, that we have to, you know, demolish and then rebuild the space. So all of the, we didn't think about is about the asbestos, I don't know if the building has the asbestos. I don't know if the building has the asbestos.
It should not have asbestos.
Yeah, uh, I seen the, most of the walls are the concrete, it shouldn't have the asbestos, but you know, the, again, we didn't think about it. I may need your help on that one.
But you, you would probably still have to look, do a study, uh, I'm, I'm not sure what it would be, but you would have to look at, but I don't think it does, but you'd have to, you'd have to.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Actually get, get a study done. Um, so the thing is, is that, so you're look, you, you're looking to put in money. Now, the thing is, is that the, the city will continue to own the facility.
That's right.
And so you're kinda modeling it, what the city did with the Gertrude Bruce, with the, uh, help me here, Black Cultural Council?
Yes.
Okay. And so there'd be no deviation. Uh, it would have to continue to be a secular facility. You cannot put anything as far as, uh, religious items on the walls and things of that nature. The city will continue to control it. It would have to be available for the entire community if they're be able to lease it. So scheduling would, would also have to still be, uh. Well, we have, basically have a contract would be submitted to the cultural, can, can you, can you walk us through what, what that, that is Dan, as far as on the Gertrude Bruce?
Well, Gertrude Bruce, if I understand correctly, it is just off the top of my head, I believe it still is, they have a contract with us, but they are able to lease it out.
Correct.
It's them that lease.
Oh, they're the ones, not, not the city. Okay, I understand correctly.
If, if, if I remember.
But they have to make it available for lease.
Yeah, so if, so if someone came, let's say I decide to come to you and say, okay, I wanna, I wanna have a birthday party for my little girl or whatever, then in the day to a day, you'd have to lease it to me.
Okay, so the basically, um, what was our promise to you, to city is, uh, again, I walked through the, most of the nonprofit companies. Uh, I seen they don't have the location. So our promise was, uh, you know, that we opened the, this location to the other nonprofit companies who serves for the community's benefits. Let's say if this, you know, the birthday, it's not the community, it's a personal. So again, like it might go under the lease. But if this serving for the community is based, like they're gonna do the some fundraising, definitely it's free to use.
Understand.
So we, we try to make sure that, you know, the, not only us, we are, uh, you know, make sure that the other locations, you know, the other nonprofits. Is using that location for the, you know, the, for community's benefit. That was our promise on the beginning, you know, the, when we talk our community members, they said, yes, that's the one of the thing.
Mayor, what I would suggest is let us put something together. We're gonna base it off of the Gertrude Bruce, uh, Black Culture Council contract. Let's put some together. Let's put it on there for a couple of weeks and let's discuss it and let's hash something out. And that's what I would do.
Okay.
I mean, that, that would be.
Sure enough.
That would be the easiest thing to do.
Hori, how do you feel about that? You know, the, uh, work with Dan, we'll work off the, what Gertrude Bruce says and, and work through the specifics.
Uh, again, uh, the decision is gonna be yours, okay? So, but, uh, I'm telling the our side, the, you know, the, how we gonna use it? How we gonna do it? And how we gonna bring that, that location alive? Because it's the prime location, it's the central of the Odessa and.
It, it, it's just essential that the, the facility, uh, because that side of town does not have anything. I mean, the closest community center is, uh, Sherwood. But, you know, and, and it's like not having a park, not having a center, you know, the, those are lacking in the, in these areas further east or the north. And so we really don't wanna see the facility just become a, a storage warehouse, you know, because it is on a busy street. And, uh, there's a school right back to, you know, keep it vital. What's, what's the greatest impact? I, I guess what I'm trying to say.
Mayfair Hollow is a location been empty?
Oh. Not even a year.
Not even a year, because it, it replaced the, it, well, the, the new Fire Station Six replaced it so approximately less than a year, probably.
Really wanted to keep it going. If it sits there at the storage facility, there will gonna be no repair. It, it will go into this repair. We've seen it happen before.
Oh, I just, I just took one, one of staff, I just thought we were using that, we needed that storage space desperately was last time I asked about it. And that was gonna be to like the, for Starklight Village and I think Parks and Recreation told me that, that that's what the plan was, was to put a bunch of that stuff in that.
News to me, because I never had anybody communicating to me what was gonna be used for, there were.
That's the only thing I ever heard was just.
Yeah, well, you heard more than us, because you never heard that.
Because we had, uh, the town and country people came out immediately, wanted to be able to purchase it. And so, uh, it never went anywhere. And they, they were trying to go through staff and then we had several people coming through. And so then, uh, then there's somebody basically say, well, there, there's a top up. Storage facilities, okay, so what's gonna be stored? Wind up now, that's, that, that's a really prime location for it just to become storage. And can't we find a usage, devotes ourselves of the property, put it on the tax rolls, things to that nature. And then, and then, uh. Peace Academy came up and asked, well, what's the possibilities? I said, I don't know, let's, let's take a look at it. You know, I, I wind up talking to Mr. Anderson, he went and showed the property. I asked his opinion, what do you think? He goes, why don't we just sell it? Well, when we spoke to city attorney, so, well, you know, there's all these things you can and cannot do. Selling it wasn't an option. And so basically said, well, why don't we have a discussion? We could look at something similar to Gertrude Bruce and work through those details. And that's how we got to this presentation. And so I, I know one thing is that for many years, there is, now that's District Three, I, you know, it's District Four. As of last year, now it's District Three, but the one thing that doesn't exist is a community center there. There's, there, there, the group is willing to put some investment, they, you know, he asked, you know, if we wind up getting an, an old company, could we put the name on it? Absolutely, you can put it on there. The bigger, the, the bigger the contribution, the bigger the sign.
Definitely.
Mayor, Mayor, I would ask Mr. Bernal to maybe get Mr. Anderson to take a look, see if there's any asbestos in it, maybe get something. So that we would know if we're gonna need to do any remediation, anything of that nature.
So on, on asbestos thing, basically, again, the budget, again, you know, we have enough to, you know, the.
To take care of.
Get by, uh, so we are willing to, you know, the, put it two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, but asbestos, I don't know, the, you know, the. We, we took the one building in Midland and they said the seven hundred and fifty thousand and I said this.
Well, that all depends where.
Depends on the size, right?
In those buildings, if there's any, if there would be the, I've never been in buildings, I can't tell you what the floor is. If it's tile. And that tile in the fifty-sixties, then it would be in the adhesive. If there's anything else, if it has the, the tiles on the ceiling. That also has the adhesive, it would be in the adhesive. And so it, but I, but I, like I said, I, I've never been in that building.
Yeah, most of them, you know, the, as my experience, most of them is the concrete building, so it shouldn't have the big problem. Again, you realize the, you know, the inspector, to, you know, the inspector and then get the sample from that location.
It could be in ceiling tiles, it would be in adhesive, it could be in the floor tiles, if it's the old fifty-sixties type, type of, of tile. Once again, like I said, I've never been in there. Anything else would be on, uh, covering of, of, of pipes. But I, I, I don't think it would be throughout the, the whole facility. I just, I just, I'm, I'm pretty sure about that. And so I've had some experience in past lives with asbestos remediation, knowing the year and, and the time, if there is, I think it would be conformed to that.
Uh, again, to, you know, the repaying in front of you all, the, about the, you know, the sponsorship, if you find a sponsorship for a building, you know, the, basically. If you go to the, reach out to oil fields, I know like the Chevron doesn't have the community center in this town. So if you reach out them, if you tell them, you know, the, hey, go and put your sign, be, become a sponsor for this building as this community center. I asked them like on the pre-meeting, can we do it? Yeah, definitely. If you guys approve, next step is gonna be to reach out, you know, to those big companies. If we can find the sponsorship for the, you know, the.
Okay, well, go ahead, turn.
Well, I've just got one more question. I mean, one more thing, I might be a problem, because I also know, because I was asking about that while we were building Six. Uh, the new Six is that the parking around there with the school and with the shopping center. I believe there was an issue with the number of parking spots that are dedicated to the fire station. And I could be wrong about that.
Okay.
But that's my, that's my memory, because that was gonna be the problem with selling it. Because there was some kind of an agreement that I'm not aware of, you probably can't find it, you can try. Between the high fire station and the, and the, and the shopping center to use some of those spaces.
Okay, so basically.
Don't tell me where I learned all that, I have no idea, but that's just what I was told when we were going through that process. And I just remember things like that, because parking around that building is.
Yeah, good part of that, you know, the, uh, parking lot is, it's open, you know, the, there's one side is blocked, it's close to strictly belongs to the fire, uh, Fire Station Six. The other side is open, so it's, if I parked the, you know, the, the other properties or if they can park in front of us, so it's open for everybody, so.
Yeah, but I think it's back to the, back to the east and that's Dairy Queen's.
Uh, no, I think it, it belongs to whatever the, you, the plan you guys submit to us, it's, uh, it shows that it's belongs to the city, I think.
Chief Cotton, nothing wants to mention something about this?
Yeah, so you want to come up?
Yeah. So it's just an issue we have to address.
If, if not, the city secretary will get on me by not having anybody come up here to the, uh, microphone.
So, Ian, I, I don't know for sure either the exacts, but from what I've been told, the back of the building, the wall, is the end of the property on the south side.
South side, yeah.
Also on the west side.
Also, it's west side too.
So the parking lot that's on the west side is not the fire station's property.
Right. What about the one on the east?
The one on the east side to the fence between Dairy Queen and Fire Station, yes.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's what I.
So the one to the, to the one to the west is belongs to the school?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And currently right now, I know that the, uh, Peace Academy uses that with the school.
That's right. I mean, we, we park there, you know, we park there, uh, after hours.
After hours, yeah, yeah. So, okay, so the parking lot, so the parking lot to the east belongs to?
Fires.
The, the building. And then the block on the south is the end of the property.
Now, again, that's what I've been told.
Mayor, we'll take a look and see if we can find it.
Not real fast.
Yeah, she'll find it.
She will. Any, any other questions?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
I guess I need to preface this with an example. When I was in college, I had friends from middle, I had friends from the Middle East. From Asia. We had different religions, we had different cultures and it was wonderful to become more aware of them. And then I think you'll notice that almost everyone on council has been to the Peace Academy at dinner at the elegante a lot back. But my question is, trying, trying to look also digging a little bit in the visit, business model, you have social services, education, financial, scientific. Community outreach. My question is, just candidly, what, how, what percentage of a focus is your religious outreach?
Okay, basically, um, most of our activities, like the seasonal, like say it's Ramadan. It's belongs to the, you know, the Muslims, you know, the holy month, if like the, some of our members are Muslim, include me. So we, you know, the, we try to reuse that month, like the one month for the, you know, the, not at the community center, but we are reaching out them more. So there are some, you know, the Jewish communities, they, they have a special days, we try to reach out, we try to celebrate together. Basically. We try to bring the harmony, we try to bring the, you know, the, those diversity together. So Muslim can celebrate the Jewish, Christians, uh, holidays and then Christian, Jewish celebrates the Muslim's holidays together. So we are not separating the, you know, the A to B. We try to make sure that we are reaching out the everybody equal on that part.
Thank you. Any further questions? Council, any further discussion? Do we have a consensus of just to, um, have the legal department look and put together, uh, a proposal? Kind of following the framework of the Gertrude Bruce, uh, being contact with the Peace Academy, going back and forth the parameters. Be in contact with, uh, with the legal team, if there's one, something that you want to discuss or you want to be added or, uh, further assurances. Uh, length of the, uh, of the, uh, of an agreement, uh, the usage, uh, we've talked about nonprofits and things of that nature also in that. Is there anything else that I'm missing?
Has to be secular.
Secular?
And we, like I said, Gertrude Bruce is the same way as well.
Yes, yes.
It's secular, so it, it's a good follow.
It's a good follow, okay. Uh, any other, hey, well, I would, I would basically from here for the next couple of weeks, let's go through this process and we'll bring it back. We'll go through it, you know, if there are any changes that we need to make, clarifications, we'll do that and then we'll proceed.
There's another thing is basically, I forgot to tell on the presentation. Hopefully, you know, if you guys grant us the location, we wanna add the, you know, the, some, you know, the. Counting basically how many people are attending, our ladies, mans. So we're gonna see the, what's the social impact to the, our community, that location. So we wanna count that one. So hopefully, when, like, if I give the, next year, the, hopefully if I'm okay and then if I'm here in this town. So if I give the same presentation to y'all in front of y'all, everybody, so I wanna make sure, you know, I'm giving the clear, you know, the numbers. Hey, I have, you know, the four thousand people attended, this much effect onto the community. So it's gonna be another promise to that.
Also, will you be in contact with the school? That way we're not notified, uh, notified what we're doing to make sure that there will be no issues with the shared parking lot?
Oh, definitely.
I know you have that contact with.
Oh, yeah, it's a close friend, the principal.
Yes. Uh, any, uh, further discussion? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much for having us. I don't know how we did.
No, you did good.
Did we do okay?
You did great, you did great. I'm surprised that you say you're nervous, you speak in front of a lot of, uh, people all the time.
Again, plus twenty-two, I met a thousand people, but I know, you know, the.
This is a different setting now, it makes it nervous, yes it does.
We're gonna go to item four, discuss renewal contract for, uh, school crossing guard services agreeing with the County ISD and City of Odessa Police Department for sharing cost. Michael Batta? There you go, sir.
East ASD has more money, let's just put it all in there.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. How are you guys?
Good.
So, uh, the crossing guard service is up for renewal. Um, it's actually a joint effort between East ASD and the city. Uh, to renew the school crossing guard service with all city management services and, uh, for the upcoming school year that'll begin August of this year and run through May of next year. Um, the total cost that the services will be is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. Um, the city's cost will be two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and ten cents. And then East ISD will cover the remaining portion of two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents. And.
That's it? So this is, uh, is this payroll?
What was that?
This is for payroll?
This is for purchasing, um.
Purchasing equipment?
Um, no, this is actually for coming out of Police Department's General Fund.
No, I know that, but the agreement, the renewal agreement with in conjunction.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. It's gonna be, yes, it's gonna be the purchasing group and, uh, us here.
Okay. Council, any, uh, discussion, questions?
How, how do these figures figure, I mean, these figures you gave us?
Hello?
There you go.
No, you're on.
These figures that you just shared with us, uh, how do they compare to the previous year?
The previous year, um, our cost was four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So it's a sixty thousand dollar increase from last year.
So the annual billing rate is twenty-four thirty-one.
Yes, sir.
Yep. The, the increase on, uh, on the upside for the school districts, they're covering outside of the school, uh, outside of limits, which would be Mary Fly.
Should be a total of four.
Downing and West.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Council, any questions?
I just have one.
Yes.
Edward K. Downing?
What was that again?
Edward K. Downing?
I know there's four schools, let me just double check.
Would that be new or is that, has been existing?
Let me see.
The only question, the reason I ask is that when school got out, I just saw pretty much the teachers. I did see some guys out in trucks at a few points. Is that the people that are being hired to do that?
It should be crossing guard, it looks like, um, Down, did you say Downing, correct?
Edward K. Downing.
Okay, we do have Downing, Cavassos, Mary Fly and West listed as the four outside city limit schools that are provided the services. So they should have a crossing guard as well.
But, but we're not, but we're not covering that cost of those. So if they, if they put them out there, they do, and if they don't, they don't.
Okay.
But if they're not having a crossing guard inside the city limits and we're paying, we're paying half of that, then we would have to address that issue.
Mm-hmm. And it's all an effort just so that we're not pulling our off duty, on duty police officers to service crossing guards as we did in the past.
And Downing and West are the more newer ones. Mary Fly and the Cavassos are the older ones, right? That's, that's unfamiliar.
The number of parentheses, I guess, and the number of cars they have at that each location?
Let me go back in there, look. I believe you're correct, that's probably approximate of how much we're having. Yes.
Okay.
Should come a total of twenty, uh, thirty-six crossing guards that they usually hire.
Michael, where does, where, where's, where's the two, where's the two hundred thousand coming out of?
The, from our cost is coming out of the Police Department's Crossing Guard General Fund.
And then we're seeing an increase. You say it was four hundred?
It was, uh, last year was four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
It's a rating, it's a rate, it's a rate adjustment?
Okay.
Just out of curi.
The rate is dictated by the, uh, ACMS, correct?
Yes, all city management services, yes.
You said there's, uh, the city has thirty-six crossing guards that this money that comes from the city pays for? Thirty-six positions?
Thirty-six positions, yes, sir.
And just out of curiosity, I mean, if a person is ill and absent, is there a substitute person that is sent in this person's place? So that we have crossing guards always covered?
Good question. I would like to say they would have someone on spot, but I don't want to guarantee that exactly on that actually position.
I guess what I'm saying.
Well, what happened in the past?
Go ahead, sir.
If they, if they didn't have anyone to be able to cover, they would call the police department. And then we would send someone out. So, um, they're, they're supposed to have substitutes ready to go, but if they can't, our ultimate, uh, is to fall back on the police.
Please, okay.
I'm, I'm sure the absenteeism rate wouldn't be very high, but my interesting concern would be that we not be paying dollars to a position that's supposed to be filled and that person not be there.
Exactly. I understand.
Council, any other questions? Do you have the consensus to move forward?
Yes, yes.
Michael, thank you very much.
I believe I'll have the next one as well.
If, if there's, if it's a possibility, if we can find out from ECSD about the, uh, that situation when they wind up that. Okay. And get that, uh, email answered back to, uh, Councilmember Vasquez, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna move on to, oh, you have the next item. Item, uh, by considering approval of the renewal contract for auctioneering services. Go ahead, Michael.
Yes, yes, and that's up for renewal as well. So on behalf of the city and the Hector County Purchasing Group, um, we're considering renewal with Renee Bates Auctioneer Services. Um, services will be for one year and the contract period would run from May of, actually this month through May of next year. And it's, um, they are registered as a buy board purchasing cooperative and they would manage the auction online as they did in the past.
Council, any questions?
Where's this money coming from?
Uh, there's no cost, it's our annual, oh, I'm sorry. It's, uh, what we actually distribute out in auction as revenue.
Five percent commission. I like that, we should all do that one. That's a, that's a, that's a white neck. Council, any other, any other questions? Michael, thank you, we really appreciate it.
Yes, you're welcome.
That was easy.
Thank you for your time.
We'll be here all day. Uh, we're gonna, item six, discuss approval of purchasing twenty-two new sets of bunker gear for the suppression staff at OFR. Mr. Ritchie. How you doing, sir?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
City Councilmembers. Um, Odessa Fire Rescue will be looking for approval to purchase twenty-two sets of bunkers. Uh, this will be the second half of the bunkers for this year. This will get us in compliance with TCFP, uh, who is actually auditing us this year in June. So we purchased twenty sets here recently and this will get us back to where we need to be. This money will come out of, uh, our Lifeline account, which is already earmarked for, uh, personal protective equipment.
Question on that one.
Well, I'm just curious why we didn't order all forty-two of them at the same time? It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I knew I'd seen this before, I didn't.
I, I do not want to bring up old stuff, but stuff is being handled, uh, differently now and that's why we're purchasing the second part of this, yes.
So I withdraw the question.
The question, the question is, uh, have we, uh, ascertained the, uh, the Lifeline funds? Are we still looking?
No, we did, we know where.
We found it?
Yes.
Okay. So you narrowed it, narrowed it down?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Mr. Ritchie, anything else?
Uh, no, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm like, this guy will be crazy.
Yeah. Item seven, discuss Ratliff Ranch, uh, golf course priorities, problems and solutions. Now, they're right there, I like that. The last part, solution.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Go ahead, Matt.
We have, uh, some pictures of the mussels that, uh, Councilman Thompson took.
In case you don't know what a muscle looks like. Our friends in East Texas send those as love.
Where were these at?
That's what's going through our water.
And this is what's causing.
Show the other one, man.
That's what's causing problems.
That rattling. Causing problems everywhere.
Yeah.
That's what they look like when you clean them out.
Mayor, do you know where they originate from?
Yeah.
Eastern Ru, Southern Russia and Southern Ukraine. Yeah.
Well, ours are coming from East Texas lakes. When they go over to fish at Ivy and catching those lungers, they're coming off their boats. And there is no way to stop them.
Yeah, they have to run with two.
Yeah, I get it.
So I come before you guys to show, um, our priority list, what solutions and problems that we are currently having out at Ratliff Ranch. So the first, uh, item is our greens. Our greens, uh, burnt up, uh, back in May of twenty-two. Uh, we had about forty percent coverage of the grass on the putting surface. Currently, we're back to about eighty-five, ninety percent coverage, so we're still working to get it back. We're hoping to get that back by the end of, or in the fall of this year. To, um, we're seeding and sodding to get our, we have three greens that are in worse shape than, um, the other greens. That's, uh, hole number two, fifteen and seventeen. So we are using the chipping area, um, that we currently have because it's good, uh, putting surface. So we're sodding that areas and plugging the greens to get it back faster. Um, and then the seed is, uh, taking on the other greens that aren't as in bad shape. So another thing that we did with the greens is our new golf course superintendent made sure that our irrigation system, uh, the heads are covering all the greens. Before, we were getting loss of water, so they weren't watering in certain areas. So now we've, uh, replaced every, um, sprinkler head that is around the greens. So we're making sure that we're getting adequate water on the greens every night, um, to help with that. And then, uh, like I said, I showed you the zebra mussels. Uh, they're currently, we're using acid to break down the shells. It doesn't kill them, but it breaks down the shells and that's what you see is broken down. So it's getting into the irrigation line and going through to the sprinkler head, at the bottom of the sprinkler head, that's where it all holds, so it doesn't allow the sprinkler head to come up. So then it's not being used at all, so we're not getting any coverage.
Show, show the next slide, they'll be more, they'll understand the next slide better. It looks like what it looks like when you blow it out. There you go.
So this is, uh, in the middle is the sprinkler head and then around it is when we, uh, flush the system and then that's all the shells around it. So then, um.
I don't, I don't mean to correct it, Matt, and I'm sorry, but just so everybody understands, the acid that's putting through the pipes.
Correct.
It's not killing these, it's killing the babies that are attached to the pipes inside the irrigation system.
Yeah, and it's breaking, it's breaking down the shells. Yeah.
I mean, I've studied this, it's been a problem.
You know, I got no issue.
No, I'm just telling you, that's what.
Peter will have an issue with it, but I don't have an issue. You gotta do what you gotta do.
Yeah.
Does the acid damage the, the greens?
No, no, it's, it's a very small amount of acid going through the system. It's just to try and break down the shells so we don't have as big a shells going through the system and causing more problems that way.
You kill the babies with what you do.
No, this, this is what we have on our end. But the thing is, the sources, you know, they're, they're gonna send divers down and start looking with, with the source, but there's still stuff coming, stuff coming through.
Yeah, I know they're very.
Aside from all the, the mud and the sledges coming through, then we got this issue.
So our permanent solution for this is we got a quote from a company to put a filtration system on that, so it'll stop the mussels from going into the irrigation system. And we've, um, we thought it was gonna be thirty thousand to forty thousand. We got that back, it's ten thousand is the filtration system.
Ten thousand.
So we're gonna look at installing that, that's not installed. Um, we're looking at another five to ten thousand for the installation because.
So you're looking anywhere from, uh, fifteen to twenty?
Correct. And we have that in supplemental already, so we're gonna, I'm gonna get that ordered tomorrow.
And so what's, what's, what's the life expectancy, the filtration will last?
So we have to, we have to clean it out because if they get stuck, we have to clean it, but that's gonna be on our staff to do that.
Okay.
Um, and then the reason why we went this route is in, uh, New Mexico, there's a golf course there that installed this filtration system and they've had very good success of stopping the mussels from getting into the irrigation system.
Okay.
So that's why we're going that route.
Move on to the fixed mainline gates.
Yep, so the mainline gate valves, uh, we've come across that, uh, eight of them are broken shut and it's been that way for five years. So we're.
You haven't been here five years.
Correct.
Do you have any idea why?
So it's either, um, staff opening and closing them because they're not designed to do that, that much. So they were, for whatever reason, they were doing that and then it's broke shut.
For five years, it was never addressed.
Correct.
I don't get that.
And that, that, and that's coming from staff that's been here in that amount of time.
I'm so disappointed in all that because that's a revenue source for us, that golf course is, it can be a great revenue source.
So, and the reason for us fixing those valves is to get the water pressure back up because the water pressure is low in certain zones. So then you don't get as much coverage in the fairways and on the greens and that kind of stuff.
For five years, we've been not getting the coverage, we have to low pressure.
Correct.
And so, yeah, so this basically the solution for valve fixes, eight to nine.
Yes, and then we have that currently in the supplemental that we have out there.
What size lines are those, what size gate valves are?
I don't know that off the top of my head. We, because they're down quite a bit, so we have to dig down to get to them, but we haven't, um, physically laid eyes on that yet.
Mayor, um, but I'd like to, I'd like to add a little bit to this gate valve and, and, uh, Matt is correct, it's not meant to be open and closed, but what our irrigation system doesn't have gate valves isolating certain areas. So in order.
Like a water system.
In our water system out there.
Exactly.
So in order to shut every, a certain area down, they have to shut the entire system down. And in order for them to.
So we need to add, uh, we need to add gates.
Yes, we need to add gates to.
We can isolate and, 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 okay. And you have to still keep other parts going.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's like twenty-five zones out here that don't have valves to sh, oh, to shut off that one zone. So what happens is you shut down the whole thing and nothing's getting watered.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what they're looking at is on the different zones of being able to shut them down.
That fix is under ten, ten thousand right now.
Correct, that's our estimate for that, correct?
That, that, that will, yeah, give us ability to bring up the pressure, uh, have a gate system that, how are we going to be opening and closing, are we gonna, is gonna be?
It's just.
So it's still, still gonna be?
Correct, correct.
But we'll be able to address all the zones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Where's our water source for that coming from?
It's raw water that we're getting from the Darrington plant.
We supply.
We, yeah.
Oh.
Right?
I was hoping it wasn't CRMWD.
But it is basically, it is basically.
But, but, but we, we, we send the raw water from, uh, Dar, Bob Darrington. So let's go to the complete irrigation head replacement, uh, because we're talking, I mean, this, this is, we, we have a difference of fifty thousand.
So after the filtration system gets installed, we're gonna keep doing the acid to break down the shells and then we're gonna do a complete flush of the system to get all of the remaining shells out of there. So then we're gonna go through and, uh, look at every single irrigation head to make sure that we're getting enough coverage in the fairways and everything and our estimate, because those irrigation, um, sprinkler heads have gone up so much, they're four hundred dollars a sprinkler head. Um, so our estimate is between fifty to a hundred thousand for that. So the remaining money that we have in supplemental, we're gonna cover some of that, but I don't have, I only, I have forty-nine thousand in supplemental currently, so I, I don't have enough money to cover every single head, um, for that, so.
You're gonna try to cover the most critical, what you can.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And then, um, on the next, uh, just like I said, I'm trying to, um, tell you what our priority list is and trying to, our problems and our main problem is the irrigation system out there. So the next, um, priority is to get a new control panel, um, for the, running the pump station. Because when they installed the control panel, the company that installed it went out of business three months after. So now we have to retrofit everything and there's a gentleman, um, out of Dallas that has been servicing that. So we have another company, um, that, uh, installed some of our irrigation, uh, pumps this time along with fixing, uh, the main line along with our filters out there and their estimate was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight ninety to get a new control panel. So basically we would get a, a new, uh, brain for running the whole irrigation system and then they would come and program it, they would install it, uh, for that price. And then for that hundred and twenty-eight thousand, we would get a six-year warranty on the drive, uh, for the irrigation system along with, uh, all the components on the electrical panel and then a two-year, uh, labor warranty as well. And then to have them build that out, it's twenty to twenty-four weeks, uh, for that. So it's a, quite a long process for the. And then, um, the next item is our bulkhead. So in the pump station where our filters come into our pumps, there's, um, piping that connects everything and they, they call it a bulkhead. There's been corrosion, uh, water's been leaking on that for multiple years. So we don't know what the integrity of that is. So we're, we got a quote for that and that's eighty-seven thousand, four forty-two.
Going back with metal again, you're going back with PVC?
It would be metal.
Why would you go back with metal?
Um, we.
Our water's so hard out here, everybody uses PVC.
Okay, I, uh, we can go back to the, um, company, um, and make sure that it's PVC.
I would, I, I definitely would do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the only reason.
Even if it's a little bit more, because.
Excuse me.
Councilman Thompson, right, the water's hard and you're using wall rock. It's gonna break it down.
So you're fixing a problem with the same problem?
Yeah.
Well, this piece of, can be done here in town, from what I was looking at out there and then we could take it to the coating shop and get it coated. Then we don't have this problem. We can get this and it still stays integrity, you need the weight up there to hold this up. PVC's gonna collapse with the weight that's on top of it, so.
So right now he's up to about four seventy-five, he's close to a million dollars.
And then, um, the next is our tee boxes. Um, tee boxes are elevated and we're not getting coverage from the irrigation system because they're so built up that, um, previous, um, individuals haven't looked to make sure that the coverage was on top of the greens or on top of the tee boxes, so it's, the water's hitting the side and rolling down, so it's not even getting coverage on the top. So we're looking to lower them about two to three feet, um, and then make sure that, um, we're getting the proper coverage, uh, irrigation wise.
Matt, on, on that one, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I've done it seventy years playing golf, so and I've reconstructed several golf courses, been involved. I think that's the last thing you want to do in West Texas because it's so flat.
Okay.
I think the, the solution there is to, is to just level the tee box. Sand out here blows and so Sam, oh, excuse me, Sam blows on top of the tee, makes it crowned. So we just need to go in, take the sod off, level the surface sand, put the sod back on and then it make it flat and it'll stay, it'll flatten it up. You won't have to lower it two or three feet because if you put the tee right on the ground, which is what you're talking about doing, then the player can't see where he's trying to hit the golf ball. So that's the only reason they build them up in West Texas is to have some kind of elevation change. So I'm just, that's a better way to do it than.
So some, some of the.
That's an easy way to do it.
So some of the tees are like way up there, so we were gonna lower those down. So it's not to, they, they can still have the elevation, it's just to not have the gr, the big elevation change on them. And I can, I can get to like which tees we're looking at and we can talk about that as well, like. And I can, I can get to like which tees we're looking at, and we can talk about that as well, like, I'm not trying to, um. We, we, we can look at it, it's not set in stone or anything like that.
I just, I don't know how many golf courses you've done. And, you know, that's just something I, I live and breathe, and I've helped rebuild several as a board member on a greensuicide.
Correct.
So I kinda understand what's going on, and I just wanna make sure we don't destroy the integrity of the golf course.
Correct.
Because this, what you're describing, all this stuff, is a huge project.
Correct.
Very, very expensive.
And we're looking at about, in, in, in the winter, so, um, you have about a hundred thousand right there in price tag.
Correct.
So you're over half a million right now. Then you're looking at landscape, uh, desert, install desert landscape?
Correct, because in certain areas on the golf course, they're not, um, we have irrigation heads in that area, but they're not working, there's no grass or anything. So we're asking, or we're looking to do a desert landscape out there to make it like a true desert course, something like Tucson.
Yeah.
Um, Scottsdale, that kind of a thing. So then that would reduce our, um, irrigation heads as well, so we would look, we, with doing the desert landscape, we would be ca- uh, reducing by fifty to a hundred irrigation heads. So then that would allow us to move around and that kind of stuff as well.
Okay.
Um, but it's only, like, by eighteen green, there's a, going up to the driving range, that area. And then by between two and three, uh, two green and three tee box, there's an area that we would look at doing the desert landscape at. Those would be the two main to start, and then other throughout the course as well.
Fifty thousand would cover the cost of sending in our F P R Q here locally?
No, we would do it in-house, it's material, um, like the DG and all that, correct. Correct.
Okay, so, um.
And then the next priority is putting parking lot lights out in the parking lot. Um, so currently we don't have any parking lot lights out there, um, and then it would allow individuals to be at the restaurant longer, um.
And you're doing.
Have dinner, that kind of stuff too.
And you're doing solar?
Yes, I would like to do solar out there, um.
We talked about this once, I guess when Derek was, when the restaurant service here.
I, I like the fact that, that it, it is solar, we kinda talked about that downtown too, also on solar. Uh, and then go to the last right there with, with banisters, uh, exactly where?
So it'd be all the wood banisters going around the pro shop, around the restaurant, and the tournament pavilion, and we're going down the stairs that we have there. Um, and then where the, um, ha- or where the ramp is, all the wood railing, we would look at doing, uh, the metal railing. Out there as well, and we got a quote to do that, and they quoted at, uh, fifty thousand. And then with the birds being out there, it would allow us to, uh, wipe down the rails a little bit easier if it was metal, yeah.
Because there is bird feces everywhere.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I've been out there several times. So let me ask this question, right now, what do you have in supplemental, what can you cover with supplemental right now?
So right now I have four, forty-nine thousand is what I have currently in supplemental, so the very.
That's all available for these items right here up front?
At the very front, so the first thing that we're doing is the filtration system because that's a, we have to get that done. So we're doing that first, and then, um, from there, we're gonna do the gate valves, install those. And then whatever money we have left over is gonna be the focus of getting the new irrigation heads, um, for that.
Right now, that's the focus right now, is the irrigation?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me ask a question about the metal railings, um, and I don't know much about materials, but would metal ra- railings be longer lasting than the, uh, wooden banisters?
Yes.
But would they eventually rust? I mean, is there some kinda?
It, there's a protective coating on it, so it would protect it, um, we would, um, paint them so they're not gonna rust or anything like that.
They could also be powder coated also.
Correct, correct.
We can, okay, yeah. All right, so, so let's, the.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, some of the things we could help out with here is, I was just asking, uh, I might be here that. The same valves that are used on this golf course are used at the waterworks department, and we have discontinued stuff over there. So we could substitute in some, some of the valves that have been discontinued into this, uh, to use these valves in here.
Could you retrofit those?
I would have to get with our superintendent, he knows about the valves, I, I'm not a valve expert.
So, I mean, you're just talking about water lines and stuff coming in, they're just either beveled valves or whatever, I'm, I'm pretty sure that they could reuse some of these valves that we have. Especially if the valves have been discontinued and they're just laying on the shelf.
It's worth, it's worth looking into, we can, it save money if we do that, take these off and use them. We can bring down the, the dollars, okay, so, um. So we're talking, you, you've got less than fifty thousand, so what, what your, so your priority one is, which would be what?
Priority one is to get the greens back up, so we're using sod and all that, but that's in-house, there's no cost to that. The first cost is the filtration system, that's between ta- uh, fifteen and twenty thousand, it depends on installation of that. And then the next thing, if we can get those valves and retrofit them, that would help, um, to go to the irrigation, uh, sprinkler heads. And focus on getting new heads for that.
Okay, so here's an idea, council, uh, let me propose it, because this is gonna run into the agenda. Currently, the city of Odessa has six point five million that we had put together towards downtown. There's been the discussions since we, we've been elected and through this, is that that's got to be used just for downtown. And, you know, back in November, this council from split vote, put six hundred and forty-eight thousand towards a study for two blocks. And so the thing is, is that, I say it, I said it then, I said it now, there is no way that this community, I know I wouldn't accept it, uh, uh, six point five, go to two blocks. We can wind up having an impact downtown at a much less price. Uh, and I think that we have the, the, in, in our planning and zoning, we have someone there that is putting together a plan. They could probably do that for about a million, I'm basically saying one point six, because I don't think a million would suffice. Once, one point six in different phases to get something done. Basically, that gives us leeway to address issues in other districts. But this council would have to have a hard discussion about that. It can redirect, still accomplish what we want to accomplish downtown. Go back to the original, uh, plan that, uh, we had asked the tourists not to spend money on. They, they didn't listen to us, they wanted to spend one, one hundred and twenty thousand, it went down to eighty-seven, and still, we still could. And we told them not to do the study because it wasn't what they needed to go forward. And, you know, in, in the, in the, in, in the narrative, they reluctantly agreed with us, well, you should have agreed it because we were, we were telling you it was gonna happen. And so the thing is, is that we have needs throughout this community. I agree with Councilman Thompson, this is a moneymaker, and we need to make, be making money. You know, it is disappointing that we've known that, you know, for five years this has been going, this has been going, and it's just been ignoring it, we've been pushing money somewhere else. We need for the, this money, hey, we need to make this work. I think there is an opportunity for us to be able to address all these issues. And get this thing to a golf course that we can be proud of, and it could be a generator. We've already made an impact when we did the, the carts, which has made a huge impact.
Sure has.
We can get our rounds up. And so, but we don't have to have a hard discussion about, you know, those CEOs, it can't, it can't be addressed. There's a false narrative that it cannot, that is not true, you know, the council can do it, there are, there are, there are ganas that will go through, but the thing is that we can do it, and we can do it, we can put it on the work, work session, we can work through it, and we can start addressing this. Committed to downtown, I think that we, I know we can do it, we, we've got the people within, uh, with our departments to be able to address it. There are ways to be able to cut out the red tape, cut out expensive engineering, cut out expensive designs, we know where everything's at, let me put it in words. When we wind up building the, uh, the Marriott, I guarantee a hundred percent that all those truck lines have not moved from that, from, when, and construction was completed today, it has not moved. We know exactly where they're on. And so I think we need to be smarter with it, we can address these issues and even much more. And so, I think that there's a, a possibility, a real advantage to be able to address this, and, uh, why not, yes, sir, go ahead.
So, my, my, my concern has always been on this golf course, after I got told there was a number that, uh, was being lost out there constantly. And after having a meeting and seeing that that money cost came down, we're almost there to make, that. If we're, uh, we're at a hundred and sixty-eight, or just say a hundred and sixty from being a moneymaker. And we're gonna invest a hundred and sixty thousand, that's, and back into this golf course to get this going, that would be the last step to make this go. And then there's, we've discussed some other stuff, but looking at some other stuff out there for, to, uh, help the golf course continue on to this. And so, I am in agreeance to. We put this off past city councils, it doesn't matter who it is, somebody put it off and we keep kicking the can. So if we're gonna keep kicking the can, then shut it down. But if we're not gonna fix it.
That's true.
Shut it down.
There is a reservation clause in that contract, if that's the case though, we, I happen to know that, it goes back to the ranch, but, but that's okay, I understand. I'm in the same position, Mr. Handy, I agree with you a thousand percent. Either keep it up and make it good, and figure out, start reserving for maintenance, which we've never done, I'm sure, and take care of it properly, or get out of the business, one of the two.
Yeah, well, I think each council member here has received phone calls from citizens complaining about this, I mean, we've been missing out on tournaments. They're going to Andrews, they're going to, uh, Cigars, I mean, it's the middle of them, we're just missing out, I mean, we have, we had this facility to do it, we're just not putting the money into it, so.
Yeah, we need to live up to our current advertisement that I've seen on television, I'm priming, I'm going, what?
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is that, one, we need to put a priority list on this. Uh, second is also, uh, talk to, Mr. Handy suggested about, can we retrofit the, is, is it sprinkler heads or, or valves?
The sprinkler heads are the same way, so, I mean, they're a little bit bigger than what mo- than what we're probably using some of it, but some of it, they can be retrofitted right into this. We, we just need to figure out what we have, what we just got laying around, wherever we're stocking all of this stuff, and get a list put together and.
I would definitely say that, uh, that's worth a visit. Let's also look at what Councilman Thompson was talking about, as far as leveling, leveling out those, uh, those, those tee box, making them flat. Any savings can be pushed into another area, okay? And so, what I'm hearing from this council is that we're committed to, to make an investment.
Right, definitely.
There is money there from CEOs that we can wind up redirecting and, 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 but let's be smart, okay? Just because he said, well, we got this money, we can, we can go buy the Rolls Royce, we're not, we're not saying that. We're gonna be smart about this, we wanna make a huge impact, and we wanna be able to stretch these dollars. Because we wanna do an impact downtown, we can do an impact downtown, there's some other areas within the city that we also can address while we're at it. And so, uh, council, any, any others you wanna add anything else?
No, I just, I think, you know, you always hear that Rattler Ranch is a money pit, and we need to turn that around because apparently it's only been a ma- money pit because we haven't taken care of it.
Band-aids on it.
We just, yeah, keep putting band-aids on it, so we need to, we need to fix this.
So, this is the priority list, so number one, so the bullet point one is the number one priority. So this is set up as the priority list that we currently have, um, for it. So if there's certain things that you wanna see moved up and moved around, we can do that. Um, but the main, um, ask is the control panel and the irrigation heads. Um, because I don't have enough in my current supplemental to cover th- those costs.
Okay, so, the one twenty-eight, eighty, uh, eight ninety?
Correct.
And that's control panel?
Yes.
Okay, and then the, what are we going to?
And then it would be the bulkhead?
At eighty-seventh, eighty-seven, four forty-two?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'd say those are priority, I agree, Matt, I agree a hu- a hundred percent with you, because of the twenty-four weeks. Because what you've gotta do is you've gotta need to get this done over the fall and early winter, so that when it starts warming back up, you, you're ready to roll.
Correct.
And then by the time it gets hot, you should be, have everything, because your growing season for your bent grass, I assume he's putting bent grass back down, I have no idea what kinda seed he's using.
It's bent grass.
Yeah, so if he's putting bent grass back down, you start seeding, you seeding it now, and then you seed it again in October, when it cools off, it's a cool weather grass, you can grow it all winter. And that's, that's a piece of cake, but, but the tee boxes and the.
Correct.
Irrigation stuff needs to be done in that.
Yes.
Period, that when, in my opinion.
Yes.
So you're ready to roll in February, it was so warming up.
What you can cover is you got item one, which is the, the punnet greens.
Yes.
Then you're gonna go into and then address the fifteen to twenty on the, uh.
Filtration.
On the filtration, then you're gonna go for the mount, uh, main, uh, main live gate valves.
Yes. And then whatever money we have left over there is gonna be the irrigation, uh, heads, the sprinkler heads.
And there's a possibility that that eight thousand, nine thousand dollar.
It could, it could come down.
Might be lowered if we can use some of these gate valves from the.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I understand.
Then we got the, uh, the sprinkler heads, which we don't know where that right there, and then we go up to the, uh, one twenty-eight, and then the eighty-seven.
Correct.
So we're talking about three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand? Okay.
Sprinkler, sprinkler head, sprinkler heads will be on the back end of the deal there, and the sprinkler heads are typically, typically used, throw, throw water fifty yards either direction. And so, and they're, they're high-pressure heads, and they throw a lot of water a long way.
What, what I'd like to also discuss, when, i- i- if, if we get there, if the council goes in that direction. And we get, essentially say we get a good portion of this wish list in, in, in plays, and we start watching the revenues, we have to be committed. And this is, but you determine how much percentage that we hold back the revenue that has to continue, but it may not.
I agree.
Okay, and so we have to write that into the policy. Where basically this is the way it's gonna operate, where you're not winding up and just taking it, say, I've got extra money, I wanna go buy a new toy, no. This, you cannot touch, this goes right back into the maintenance and operation, this is.
It's a slight funding depreciation, it's no different.
Exactly, and so, but we're gonna have to write that, basically we're gonna write it in grant.
Correct.
And so I would ask council, and, you know, for us to get together with legal, look at that and how we can, we can make that happen.
Right, I just need legal to tell me, on the, uh, CO money, I'm good. But it must, much better put it out there than downtown Odessa, because the amount, if any part of that we can use out there, I just need Dan to tell me how we can do it, if that's the case. You're not gonna get a fight out of me, I promise you, because that's, we're, we're turning a back on a lot of money.
Is there any other further, further discussion?
I'd like to throw one, it's just thinking outside of the box, but the bullet point number two is getting control of the zebra mussels.
Correct.
Would, um, uh, what about a fish that loves to diet on zebra mussels, it's a small-mouthed buffalo. Just something to think about, something that could be put in there, but it's not, it's a harmless fish, but its diet is this muffler.
Correct, so we're not treating the pond.
Okay.
So it's just to prevent them from getting into our irrigation line, and that's where the filtration is, so we could look at.
But they're originating from.
Yeah, because they're getting dumped into our irrigation ponds, so we're not treating that pond, all we're doing is stopping them from getting into our irrigation system. So they're still gonna be in the pond, um, we're not gonna get them out of the pond. Uh, we could, um, mitigate, uh, we could treat the pond, um, but we're not doing that current, like, that's not in our plan right now. We're just focusing on getting them out of the irrigation system.
Just an idea.
Correct.
Right, and so in this budgeting process, Mayor, we, I know that Odessa contract law has been sixty thousand dollars a year, just on the acid, I double-checked it with Ryan. Sixty thousand a year, just on the acid, per golf course. So that's a number you can plug into your budget for next year, because to, to handle this muscle problem. So I did get that number for you, because I, I knew it was expensive.
Correct, we're, we're currently, when we get a, um, a shipment of our acid, it's about eighteen hundred, uh, dollars is what we're currently paying per lo- uh, per order. And we're doing about three to four orders a year for the acid currently. So this is gonna mitigate where we're not having that a- um, acid, um, payment anymore, when we put in the filtration system. Because it's gonna stop it.
Put some acid in there.
A, a little bit at the beginning, but it should stop it.
But they did the same thing, they built a, I mean, I'm just telling you what it cost them.
Yeah.
They built a whole new filtration plant.
Oh, did they, okay.
Oh, yeah. I'm just telling you what their budget is.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
Man, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Council, any last discussion? Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Uh, then item eight, discuss mending section twelve dash one dash eight impound of vehicles in city of Odessa code of ordinances, Councilman Heen.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we are wanting to re-implement this, this ord that's here in town, and I apologize now, I just. Lost it on my phone here, um, this, we want to re-implement this amendment into, uh, a section of it that's already there, uh, a, uh. An ordinance that's already there, we want to make this to where we can impound vehicles for no insurance. This has become an expense upon every citizen of the city of Odessa with interest, I'm sorry, with insurance rates going up and up and up. And people that aren't buying the insurance, wrecking cars, it's becoming an expense on every person that has insurance and is doing this. And we're continually going up and so, I, I would like to make a recommendation that we add this amendment, impound the vehicles, and I've already talked to the chief. And he told us that he is using the citizen patrols that could come sit with the cars until we could get somebody out there to impound the cars. Um, Mr. Mayor, this is a problem. We've all, we're all going through this, we're all experiencing this.
The, the, the impound yard would be the, so every year, we wind up having one contractor that bids on the, uh, the towing, right?
I think it's Neil.
Neil Pool? Is that an annual renewal or does, do we have it for a couple of years?
I'm not really sure off the top of my head, I always said annual, so.
I know it used to be very competitive, it's like the, and so everybody was, would get upset, you know, because I, I thought it was a bidding process, I don't, I don't recall, it was a little crazy. Question here is that if, if vehicles are impounded, do they go, it goes to their yard?
Usually, yes, uh, they either that or they carry them out to OPB, uh, which is on South, uh, South Dixie, I believe, they take them out there, this depends on, on what.
The, the maintenance facility?
Is it Sa- is it South, South Dixie, I believe, they take, they like, when, they have like trailers and things like that?
Um, from what I understand, they still use Neil Pool, everything goes to Neil Pool.
Okay, so, okay, it does.
So you're, you're saying impound after an accident or if they get stopped for violation and done it?
If they get stopped for a violation, you just can't go zeroing in on a car, cause it's running down the road, but if you get stopped and you have no insurance or no proof, you can't prove you have insurance. Then yes, that's when your car.
Based on.
Yes.
Like it used to be when it, the requirement of insurance first started.
So, usually they would make you just sit there until you could bring it, so, it, just everybody got a total piece of paper and everybody's got a phone, so. Everybody's got a phone, they got their insurance on it, there's your proof right there, as long as you, you prove you have insurance, you can continue on down the road. But it is becoming accidents after accidents with people have no insurance and one of the reasons they're all fleeing the scenes too, so.
Yeah, I don't know, Neil Pool's got a big one, but I don't know.
I don't know if it's big enough.
That's all I hear, well, the only, my only other comment on that is what the mayor was just saying on that, I'm sure Neil Pool's yard's big enough and we started this, but on the, but on the other side of the coin, this is something, hey Monica, are you listening? Uh, so if, this is something we need to get ahead of with the public, cause you're gonna make some people mad, and if they, you know, they're gonna, that's not gonna be user-friendly, I guess I'm trying to say. So we need to make sure we get ahead of the.
That's why he chose me, so I would.
Oh, we give him your phone number, okay Monica, do that.
So, uh, council, uh, are we hearing a consensus I need to hear?
Put it on for two weeks.
Yeah, put it on for two weeks.
I'm good with it.
Okay, and yes, um, we'll be talking, our communications, uh, they're both, Dennis and Monica, we will have to be putting this out and make some, some discussion on this. We need a promotion on this, and the people are gonna need to be informed, uh, okay, we're gonna move on to item nine, discuss creation. Uh, discuss creation of a new industrial district around the old General Tire plant, two thousand East Pool Road, Odessa, okay, who put this on the, who's responsible for this? It puts in council, so.
You can, you can, you can put it on me here.
You want me to take it there?
Yes, cause you have all the legal jargon.
I don't know if I have any legal jargon, but, but what I can tell you is that the IDA was created and it looks like it's still in existence. Uh, Norma's gonna check, uh, tomorrow, I guess, to make sure there's no ordinance that has, that has dissolved it, uh, so it looks like it's still in existence.
Industrial district.
The industrial district.
On two thousand, so how many acres are we talking about?
Oh gosh, we're talking. Now, do you know off the top of your head how many acres?
Forty acres.
I wanna say, it, it was about, I think I saw forty to sixty acres.
No, it, 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 it's substantial, because it's, it's, they've got it, we met with Mr. Trower yesterday, Councilwoman Swann was there, and it, they've got it broken down into six lots. And I think the fifth lot they can't use because of T, T-E-Q or something.
Is, is that where the old ponds were and then the lions are buried?
I think so.
Yes, there it is.
That's correct.
Has that been fenced off?
That's, that's been fenced off.
That's about forty acres there.
But it, it's, it's a lot of acres, it's, it's probably a couple hundred acres easy, but it looks like the IDA is still in existence, it's just, the contract that we did find, it, it was just for the term of lease, it's gone out, but the industrial district still exists.
So, in, in, and, so do we have, uh, have you written up the, uh, contract for the industrial district?
Oh, no, sir, no, so, this, this doesn't even need to be, we're gonna, this was last week when we thought we were gonna have to create one, but it looks like we're not gonna have to create it. Um, so, but Nowra had a great idea as far as like actually on the lots, we would do a specific use for whatever lot one's for, for that company, whatever lot two's for, for that company. Water agreement and all that, I mean, it makes so much more sense rather than doing some big umbrella, do what us do individually.
Right, so what we would do, yeah, um, we just brought this to council, just to, for information purposes only, um, Nowra is researching to make sure that this, uh, current agreement is still current, basically. And we would just kind of pony off of that, and like, uh, like, uh, Mr. Jones was saying too, we would, um, Nowra, Nowra's idea was to, instead of making one big IDA. That wouldn't probably be conducive to some of the, uh, some of the companies that can be coming in, we'd just kinda make a, a customized one for each.
For each one, brilliant, I mean, instead of it being one big umbrella and we told Mr. Trower, we would help him, however, cause he may, he may sell lot one, lot two, and then not be able to sell the other four.
Correct.
So.
Is there some interest in that land currently?
Yes, there is, yeah, that's why we're trying.
I figured it must, must be, yeah.
And oddly enough, uh, Mr. Hanson, uh, and I forget what company he's with, all these names, but.
He's still paying the water bill?
He's still paying the water bill.
Wow.
Yeah, hundred, hundred dollars a month or something like that, flat, flat fee, but he's still paying it every month. Yeah, so.
Has this got a railroad spur?
Yes, sir, it does have a railroad spur. All the equipment's gone.
So, as we move forward.
Yeah, I think.
Uh, as, as far as an agreement, an agreement, I, like I say, I, I think it's still in existence, we just need to double-check. This, well, we, in, in, in my office there, we have nothing showing any ordinance that was ever dissolved, so Norma's gonna check for us tomorrow. No pressure, Norma.
You had it done yesterday.
Tomorrow I do.
Council, any questions?
Good.
Any comments? Seeing that there is no more business before this council and this work session, do I have a motion by councilmember Swann?
I guess I'd second it.
She's whacking on my mic. I was going like this, and, uh, taken by councilmember Thompson, all in favor of the Kidding, but saying aye, uh, opposed in Kidding, but saying nay. Motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned and we'll see you here at six o'clock.
Hey, Matt?
I'm just gonna go with it.
Don't miss it. I'm gonna carry this down, I'll be back.
I don't know if you remember wrestling, man.
I just thought I'd throw it out there for fun, this new superintendent, how kind of experience does he have?